I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for bringing us over tonight. Please help us as the governing body to make good decisions for our community and all those in our community. Please help us to have growth without overwhelming our system and just lead us to where our community needs to be in your name.
Thank you. All right. Just want to approve the agenda. Does everybody have a chance to look at your agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second and discussion. All favor eye?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move on to citizens comments. Anybody that would like to address the council can step forward. We've got three minutes to present their concerns. Anybody who'd like to speak to council? No, we'll close citizens' comments. All right, we'll move on to section E, protest proclamations. Do we have any?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to item H, the consent agenda. Does everybody have a chance to look the minutes over and consiptable?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Motion carried. And it's seeming unfinished business, so let's move on to item H. New service agreement.
Honorable governing body, this is an updated service agreement with Imagine IT, which is formerly Gilmore Solutions. So Imagine IT recently indicated the need for a new service agreement for all of their clients in March of 22. This includes an equal percentage cost increase for all tenured customers. This cost increase is due to continuous increases in costs for the tech sector along with current inflationary status, staffing shortages nationwide specifically related to the IT field. So Imagine does, was recently bought out, or excuse me, Gilmore was recently bought out by Imagine IT, which is a larger company based out of Minnesota. So with this increase, they do plan to increase staffing and some customer service availability. We believe that Gilmore Imagine has been a reliable company throughout its tenure for the city so far. They are semi-local with an office still based in Sterling and numerous staff members that live and work out of Wichita. Imagine IT has monthly calls with staff and an expanded customer service department compared to the former Gilmore Solutions. So we did reach out to the finance officials in Bel Air and Valley Center, who both recently switched to Imagine IT. I know Matt spoke to the finance director in Bel Air. I spoke to the finance director in Valley Center. And he said, per machine, they were very competitive, along with being one of the most qualified IT companies in the area. Again, they do have the most experience specifically with municipalities and some of the additional security features that go along with that, especially managing police department and wastewater treatment facility. City staff does believe that Imagine IT is still the best value and would not recommend a new RFP unless monthly charges were to increase substantially beyond what we're presenting tonight within the next year to two years. Ultimately, internal IT management is not cost effective or financially feasible, we believe, for an organization this size. Paying the salary of one to two IT employees would far outweigh the cost we pay Imagine IT. So here are some of the added benefits that were presented to us with this service agreement. So again, employee retention, as we all know, it's hard to keep employees right now in the IT sector. They're even more sought after, harder to come by. At the time they presented this, they had three openings. I'm not sure if that's still quite the case, but I know they're always looking to hire and seem to be struggling to keep people at times. So again, the expanded customer service department, more people on the phone available via email. I would say since Imagine has taken over, it's been quite a bit easier to access an actual person on the phone for customer support issues. Security tools to protect the city as security standards continue to increase as we've seen with multi-factor authentication and a lot of the ransomware that's going around the country, it's important to have additional security. Proactive approach to planning, budgeting, and execution. So Imagine IT is always looking to the future, trying to identify the city's needs and how we can address that before it's too late or becomes very expensive. So this is a one-year agreement and they can review or adjust that yearly essentially, which I believe is pretty standard. I don't think there's as much of a five-year, three-year contract available. So the service cost would increase from, to $4,000 from $3,350 to service the administrative, police, public works department, and pool of facilities and staff. If approved, the expense would be split amongst the general water and sewer funds. And I am happy to take any questions or comments on this this time.
Wasn't that your IT guy?
I spend several hours a week on this usually, sometimes more than others. But I'm not qualified enough to do that, so that's why we rely on Imagine IT whenever necessary.
So what do they do for $4,000 a month?
So for $4,000 a month covers basically everything beyond installation and like new product installation. So they answer the phones, they manage our security, they do basically round the clock security checks with that. Basically, you're paying for the accessibility of them always being available. Now, if they come out and work on a machine, work on a desktop or anything like that, you're still paying labor per individual project. This just pays for day-to-day management essentially. They come out after hours, for example, beyond the eight to five Monday through Friday window, you're paying a little bit extra for things of that nature.
And they do the system and mainframe updates and hardware backups.
So what do we budget in patches?
I thought when we bottled that stuff, that's...
You're paying $3,500?
I thought when we bottled the mainframe stuff, what we paid for that, like the lump sum was covering all the like continual work on it.
It depends on what component, because there was software within there, that there was the licenses, and then the actual frames we have a warranty on, or can't remember if it was 12 or 18 months. But ultimately, what's before you is reflective of a $650 a month increase to a monthly. And what we try and do is look at, what are we paying per unit? In other words, for each individual computer, which includes PD laptops, data cards, and stuff like that for connection to Cedric County. And then how is that in relation to actually having a body? But with this particular product, we get a hardware specialist for hardware, we get a software specialist for software. So it's kind of like, rather than trying to rely on one person for all of that in-house or through a smaller company, if something goes down, also we want to be able to have some redundancy so that we're not beholden to one person leaving the organization and we're screwed. But right now, it's still not cost effective for that. And it's one of those things too, in my time here, we've had two IT providers. And even when we transitioned to Gilmore, there was some hiccups from just the way that the system was set up with the original provider and Gilmore and how they did business. And so continuity, and particularly with respect to PD and our off-site location with wastewater and public works, having the ability to have them integrated into our system, but particularly with PD having that standalone security frame. They have to have essentially one foot in each realm, so to speak. They have their secure realm and then they have their city connection as well. So it's, and Lance can speak more eloquently to that than I can, but with respect to the KBI and...
All the security advancements and all the security protocols and everything that you have to go through just to get a, to get a new laptop, you can't just fire it up and start connecting to a Wi-Fi and do work like someone else in the civilian world could. There's lots of other intricacies that come with it, that they have everything mapped out as to. If Matt came on and started working for Imagine, you could just look at their references and know everything they needed to know. Essentially, go right through there and start working.
So we also have a dedicated account representative, account manager who meets with us once a month and is, I believe with the new contract, is planning on meeting with us even more. So if we have troubles with the technical service department or whatever, he's there to, we can call him directly and he can get stuff straightened out.
There's enough issues that an hour a month is full for the meetings.
Okay.
Motion?
Make a motion that we approve the $4,000 a month, one-year service agreement.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, move on to item two, fireworks display approval for National Night Out.
Honorable governing bodies, so this is a repeat of last year. National Night Out is a yearly celebration in August featuring free food for first responders, booths for businesses, games, and celebrations in Linear Park. The event this year is Friday, August 12th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. And the fireworks show is expected the last five minutes between the time of 9:30 and 10:00 p.m. The Goddard Chamber of Commerce is managing the fireworks show. And the last public event where fireworks were held was the discharge for the fireworks show on July 2nd for the Goddard Lions Club. So the Goddard Chamber will inform Cedric County Fire of this upcoming show. The fireworks show, if had, would be hosted by Victory Pyrotechnics and shot from the school ballfield south of Linear Park. Victory Fireworks has been in business for five years and serve many different communities in Kansas. Victory is providing the insurance with event sponsors listed as the city of Goddard and the Goddard Chamber. So since this is city-sponsored and tied to the chamber, we're not issuing a permit directly. The governing body is just authorizing the fireworks to take place. That's based on Chapter 11, Article 13. So here would be the potential area where the fireworks would be shot. Is that still correct, Amy?
Yeah, we're pending approval from the school district, but we're working with them to get back to make care of it.
So approved as a form on the legal side. I'm happy to take any questions or comments on this.
Yeah, when they're shooting it off, I'd be real careful because there's cedar trees back in there loved to catch fire on this firework school. I know the Lions Club and I was doing every, caught those trees in the forest a couple times. I'd be aware of that.
I think the county will be on site probably, right?
Yeah, and I had him go out and look at the site just to make sure, to measure and make sure there's enough space.
That's all I had. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend that we approve the discharge fireworks between the time of 9:30 and 10:00 p.m. on Friday, August 12th.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Okay, item three, purchase of Linear Park shade structures.
Righty, so last year, the city council and community members expressed concern of the lack of seating in the area of the park last, in 2021. So last year, we approved the purchase of 12 new benches that were installed around the splash park and playground equipment. These benches have proven very useful with citizens sitting on the benches daily. The tables in the shaded area near the splash pad are in continuous use from basically April to the end of September. So this is an example of the benches we put in last year. City staff recognizes that the benches are uncovered, open to the sun in the hottest summer months. We believe this can limit the overall amount of time that people choose to spend at the park. I think our goal as a city and the city council is to encourage community members to spend as much time as they want at the park without being exposed to prolonged sun and heat. Shaded areas would give children a place to relax and reapply sunscreen. Staff sought out guidance from ATHCO, who installed our existing shade structures near the splash pad, which are the tan sails that you see over there. The shades, the shades, potential shades would be available in numerous color options, including the same color as the existing shades we have. And there is a 12-week estimated order timeline on that with installation coming sometime shortly after that or early on the spring, in the next spring before park reopens. So here is an overhead view, kind of recently taken. Some of the new benches that were installed, along with the patio area over here, where the goal is to ultimately get some tables that are removable, similar to the splash pad area. This is the older playground equipment with the new surfacing and the benches we put in last year. Then a view of splash pad with the shaded sails we were referring to and the newer benches. So here's the shade structures we are proposing. So a bigger 24 by 24 shade would go over here in this open patio area, which is a little bit under that amount. So if approved, ATHCO would come in, install that shaded area with footings on each corner. And then eventually, city staff could potentially bring that cement around it in a way that complemented it pretty well. The other type of shade we're looking at is a cantilever shading. And so those could go over some of these existing benches. And we're open to feedback from the governing body on where they might want to place those. I know with Brooke and I looking out there that we talked about potentially three over here and maybe one to two over here, or potentially one in the splash pad area. But I think since there's a lot of existing shade already over here, that maybe keeping these in the sunlight might be a wise decision, as some people do like to sit in the sun. So what we're looking at is five of the smaller shades that go over the individual benches and then the one patio shade that would go near the newer park equipment. Total cost bid on that would be $85,140. That's with installation included. So they would come in, put the footings in, labor and full installation on that.
So what's the life expectancy of those shades is?
I believe it's a three-year warranty.
They take that every year. Don't you get remove them?
Do what?
Aren't you removing them?
They are the removable kinds, so I don't know exactly how it works, but you can shorten it. Shorten the posts up in the winter and take it off and then tighten it back down upon installation. So I think you can take them off each season. The bigger sails, I know it's not as easy to do that with, but at least with these smaller cantilever shades, you can take those off seasonally.
Oh, you're the man though.
So about how much is that, $85,000 for the shaded sails?
So about, about $44,000 of that is the product itself. The other half of that is labor, pretty much. And I think that is for what it takes to get them far enough into the ground that, you know, strong windstorm doesn't rip them out, essentially. you know, strong windstorm doesn't rip them out, essentially. Can pull that up for you, but I believe the 24 by 24 shade, I think floats around 20,000.
All right, do you have any thoughts from your staff, or from the council?
That fund is healthy enough to?
We have a $125,000 budget authority out of that fund for this year, and then I want to say it's, I know it's over 200,000, I think it's about 200.
259 change.
What's the 125 or what?
The fund balance is 100, is 259, I believe, and then, but we, we have the authority to spend 125,000 of that this year. For next year, depending on whatever it is.
Yeah, and with the, I guess the surfacing we're looking on at the splash pad for traction, how does that play into that total limit?
Um, so we do plan on bringing that back. I know Brooke has talked to some various contractors, and we're not sure of the feasibility quite yet of a pour-in-place surfacing for splash pad.
The, the people who did the pour-in-plays at the Linear Park right now do not recommend it on the splash pad. They say it holds bacteria for one, because of porous nature of it, and then small pieces tend to come loose from and get in your drains, clog your drains. If you have water features that, that flow out of the ground, they can clog those as well, so they do not recommend it.
Okay. There is the epoxy surfacing that kind of we had discussed, and we've got one bid supposed to be coming on that, and we're looking for a second and potentially third bidder. I think that'd be a lot more cost-effective solution.
Good.
And what about if we require them to wear tennis shoes or whatever when they're in there as a requirement, then we wouldn't have to mess with that, right? They wouldn't slip.
That's totally at your discretion.
Yeah, that's.
Water shoes.
I mean, we can tell them, but they, you know.
Well, if they don't do it, then.
We haven't had any additional reported incidents since the one from the, the parent from Wichita.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty slippery. So I.
Yeah, a whole lot cheaper to put signs out there saying tennis shoes or.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of something, like whether it's epoxy or something to increase traction, a sign.
So the material similar to the playground is, is quite a bit more costly. I think the epoxy is a relatively inexpensive solution. So we can bring that back, and you guys can make a determination at that point, but I wouldn't expect it to be a huge expenditure.
I doubt it'll rise to.
The price of the signs, signs.
We have put some signs out there, stencils, so.
Okay.
So what do you want to do about this shade? Do you want to prove it? Do you want to table it?
Motion, motion that we approve the shade.
Second.
Question, second, any other discussion? No favor, I?
Aye.
Close.
Seems like a shady deal.
Okay, question for special use application. SUP 21-1 for Camp Bow Wow.
Honorable mayor and city council, in quick background, Phil Meyer-Boffman has submitted a special use application behalf of developer Michael Schroeder to build a Camp Bow Wow franchise for dog care and boarding. The proposed development is to the west of Sonic along the North Frontage Road in a C2 zoning district. This use, though reasonable in that zoning district, did not have a clear allowable use, and this triggered a review by the planning commission, followed by the city council determining such use to be considered acceptable. Special uses are treated like rezoning applications, though they do not have to follow all the same guidelines. A public notice was given to property owners of the 200 feet and was published in the city newspaper. No feedback was given except from the fire department, who wanted to make sure that they still had access to the easement on the south side of their lot. Special uses are found under Article 13 Amendment, Section 101. Quick feedback, which is a little bit redundant here, but kind of highlights some of the key points, is that all special uses are considered first by the planning commission, finalized by city council. Planning commission did approve this unanimously on July 11th. Land uses for dog, daycare, and boarding. Proposed use is approximately 8,000 square feet. The proposed lot is Lot 1 in Prairie Metals Edition owned by Prairie State Bank. The proposed property is located next to Sonic on the east side, Orcheline on the west side of the fire station, which is to the north, and US 54, which is on the south side of the lot. So this is just some of the slides that are provided by the developer. There's a full agenda, annual agenda packet of full presentation of slides. This is just kind of highlights some of the key points. There's over 147-plus camp locations across North America, over 3.3 million dogs visit per year. It is a franchise, as mentioned, it's North America's largest pet care franchise. It's got premier indoor boarding accommodations, indoor and outdoor play areas. Camp Bow Wow sold more than 200 franchises in 41 states, plus one in Canada, over 41% being woman-owned. As Camp Bow Wow grows, the simple philosophy that they remain the same, it's all about the pets, so they have a focus on pets predominantly. And as a, as a boarding and care facility, it's, it's meant to be sort of the premier top, so as people go on vacation, they can leave their dogs with Camp Bow Wow, and then they can, I believe they have links where you can check them out on cameras and everything else as you travel. Some additional notes is that it's been growing, that as the population, obviously if the US and across the nation grows, additional dog care is needed, and so the franchise has been growing in that the pet care industry has been growing. Their vision statement is happy, healthy pets and happy, healthy people, and Camp Bow Wow is the premier provider of innovative, healthy, and happy pet care worldwide, we're lending a paw to animals in need. That's just a concept that was provided. You can see Sonic right over here. The yellow star represents the location of Camp Bow Wow in relation to the surrounding Small cost for publication, legally it's approved as the form. It is recommended that the council waive the reading of the ordinance with voice vote and approve the special use application case number SUP-22-1 with a voice plus a roll call. If you do have any questions at this time, I'm available, and Phil Meyer-Boffman, who represents the developer, is also available.
Anybody have any questions for Phil?
So are they gonna, are the dogs gonna be staying overnight outside? I mean, I know when I was over hanging out, kids were selling lemonade at the fireworks stand, either the vet dogs, just going nuts the whole time, you know?
I believe the boarding's inside, but Phil, if you want to talk about that.
I'll be glad to take.
There you go, there you go.
Phil Meyer with Baughman Company Agent for the applicant. Also with me tonight is Michael Schroeder, who'll be glad to get into specifics of the operation if you would like. So to answer your question, the dogs are inside the facility 80, 90% of the time, and the only time they're outdoors are going to be in that light green outdoor dog run. They're not allowed out into the yard to run that way. Michael's very passionate about this. He thinks this is a great location, not only to serve pet owners in Goddard, but West Cedar County. We would estimate that 50 to 60% of his business will be boarding, so one to five days typically is the timeframe for that. 40 to 50% of his operation will be daily drop-off, where residents of Goddard or West Cedar County can just drop their, they'll drop them off in the morning and pick them up when they go home at night. Won't be many dogs outdoors, and when they go on the dog run, there's an employee out there, but.
Okay.
That will answer any other questions you may have.
Yeah, I mean, my main concern was just if they're gonna be, like, you know, boarded outside, and, and then, you know, the neighborhood nearby can hear them barking all night.
No, sir.
We're just thinking about the fire department, you know, they're in there sleeping, you don't want our houses to burn down if they don't get enough sleep.
It's a little different operation when you dive into it than what we're used to seeing around here for a camp.
Sure. Okay. All right.
Sir, do you have anything?
I kind of felt like we were on Shark Tank, and I was like, how much should I invest? But other than that, with the spiel about the growing, and I mean, it's awesome, it's looks like a great business plan and seems to be successful, and I think it's something we can need. I know when I had Moki, and I thought I was gonna have to board him, I, it was hard to find something close, so.
All right, so our next steps, we'll have to waive the reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Question, no favor, I?
Aye.
Close.
I'll make a motion to approve the special use application case number SUP-22-1.
Second.
Question, second, any other call?
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
And I'll be ordinance 893.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for considering our city. All right, well, move on. Receiving file Chamber of Commerce report on Neighborhoods United.
Mayor and council, I'm Angie Benz, the president and CEO of the Goddard Chamber of Commerce, and I have Kirsten Strucker with me. She's a graduate of Goddard Academy. And typically, we would do this report all together with our other special events, but the way that we structured Neighbors United this year, I wanted Kirsten to have a chance to present to you as, we did work with the students at Goddard Academy and kind of mentored them through the event. So I'm gonna give a wrap-up, and then I'm gonna let Kirsten kind of give her take and wrap-up, but. Okay, so we had, we did this in partnership with USD 259 Goddard Academy. The kickoff event was held at the district stadium in Lunch at Pathway Church. We had 16 completed projects, five grant awards, 147 volunteers, and seven business sponsors, and that's both in-kind and financial. Our sponsors this year were Belfour Restoration, First National Bank, Blue Wall Realtors, Postnet, Allstate Insurance, Chick-fil-A, and Walmart. And obviously, our partnerships with the City of Goddard, the Goddard Chamber, USD 259 Pathway Church, and USD 259 Goddard Academy. And here are some fun pictures of the different activities and projects that took place. And I think you'll see Councilmember Leland in there with her Girl Scouts, or no, your church group, I'm sorry.
Church group, yeah.
I think I avoided all the pictures.
They did a lot of work in Means Park and Linear Park for us, so. And if you see in that upper corner there, we did have KSN, Good Day Dance, come out and cover the event, so we were able to get a little bit of coverage on that, as well as the Time Sentinel. And this is just kind of a fun article that the Time Sentinel did on the Goddard Academy students. Just want to mention them, how we structured it this year is we had our typical planning committee, and then we worked with the Goddard Academy students, and we mentored them through every aspect of the event. The idea of Neighbors United was grown through the school district, and the students actually put it together the first year, five or six years ago, I believe, it's been a little while. But the idea was to basically get students in, more involved in the community and to build leadership, and so we really wanted to take it back to that this year, and so, like I said, we were able to work with these students from the very beginning of planning all the way through, as you're gonna see Kirsten here tonight to present the recap. So the budget on Neighbors United, we did have some in the bank from last year, and then sponsorship spread in 1,500, the city funds a 5,000. So through administrative costs, the meetings, marketing, that includes the t-shirts and the different marketing pieces, Facebook ads, Time Sentinel ads, things like that, the project grants, food and drinks, and supplies, we came out with about $4,000 still in the bank for next year. So the idea behind all of these community events, obviously, is to eventually build enough where we're getting enough sponsorships to be self-sustaining, so I feel like we're in a pretty good place with Neighbors United to continue to build that and be able to do that here in the next few years. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kirsten, and she is the Goddard Academy graduate and Neighbors United Student Project Lead.
Thank you guys for letting me be here tonight. I'm Kirsten Strucker, and then I just kind of wrote down a little bit of what, what I was gonna say. So given the opportunity to help coordinate Neighbors United was a liberating and humbling experience, one of the most valuable lessons I learned is that no matter your differences, it is important to have many different outlooks on a project, especially one as impactful as Neighbors United. Without the help of chamber member mentors, sponsors, and all of our community members, it would have been extremely difficult to pull off such a larger bank. Our, our first Neighbors United council meeting was extremely intimidating. I had no idea what Neighbors United was, or how impactful it truly could be, especially for me, a student who moved to Goddard my fifth grade year, and I was, wasn't always accepted as I thought. And so, you know, having the opportunity to come out and use my physical hands to work with these citizens was honestly such a wonderful experience. So I'm gonna thank all of you guys for that. So yeah, thank you guys.
So with that, we'll take any questions, if you have any.
Questions, but thank you for taking on that project, and I saw you and your classmates pretty much in.
Thing I went to, and it was nice to see not just the little kids that their parents struggle on, but the older generation of kids, I guess, helping out, so that was nice. And congratulations on your scholarship, that's awesome. All right, thank you.
All right. Let's move on to item six, 2023 budget presentation and call for public hearing.
So this is the last budget workshop that we'll do. So far, we've covered our budget for our water and sewer fund, say we're gonna do the rest of our operating funds. Yeah, just to kind of reiterate here, the budget serves as our financial plan for operating the city in 2023, defines how we operate, and says our community's priorities based on the governing body's goals and objectives. Again, serves as a financial narrative, probably by customer service for residents and our neighbors. This fund, the budget will fund ongoing maintenance and improvements to the city's infrastructure, including our street utilities and parks, provides the tools, training, and equipment needed by our employees. It funds 31 full-time positions, including eight in administration, 14 in police, public safety, and eight positions in public works. The budget we are presenting will increase the yield levy by 1.93 mils from what was approved last year. This allows us to capture all of the valuation growth that is new to the city, but does not capture the valuation growth of current, already existing property in the city. So this will include new, well, basically, we'll capture the growth only of caused by new construction, new territory added to the city, and property with a change of use. Like if something goes from, you know, corn land to residential, that increase in valuation we will capture as part of the budget. But again, like I said, does not include valuation increases on existing property. So general fund, this is our primary operating fund, this is where we operate one quarter of our administrations, where we operate public safety, which is the police department, where we operate planning and zoning, all of our community development, all of our parks and recreation operations, and other, other things like the, you know, city hall itself, our, our parks facilities, their operating costs, and our other, other city-owned, non-utility facilities. So as you can see here, we are anticipating carrying a $2.1 million fund balance into the budget year, which is this, second to last column here. These are our revenue projections for taxes, which is our primary revenue source for the general fund. That's broken down by about a little over a third is property tax, almost half of that is gonna be sales tax, and we also get some from motor vehicle and motor vehicle taxes, which includes, you know, regular vehicles, RVs, et cetera, a little bit from franchise fees. and then some from charges for service. That's mostly, charges for service in general fund is mostly court costs and court fines, and then license of permits, which is gonna be building permits and dock licenses and things like that. Expenditure side, this top column here is our personnel costs. Again, this fund is where, like I said, a quarter of our administration and all of our public safety, which takes up, which is the majority of this personnel line item, which is salaries and benefits, et cetera. We also are carrying this line item here, capital discretionary. We use this line item to essentially allow us to levy the full amount of taxes that we're, that we need to operate the city, but also, you know, it's essentially a way to carry, it's essentially a way to carry forward that fund balance, the difference in that fund balance. So it shows here that we should end the year with a fund balance of half a million, but we're not gonna spend this capital discretionary. We're gonna carry that forward either as fund balance into the following year, but more than likely, we're gonna transfer some of that into our capital improvement fund because we know we have needs for capital improvement spending that we could use that cash for. So that, we'll determine that during, after, after the end of the year and when we see what our revenue looks like in the, in the actual budget year. So general government, which includes administration, mayor and city hall, the mayor and city council, the city hall, and the municipal court. We have it broken down by department, and then here by, by expenditure type. Law enforcement, like I said, this is the single largest operating cost center for the city. And the large portion of that here is personnel costs. We budget a full, fully-staffed police department, like we budget a fully staffed for all of our departments. And even though they have open positions, we're still gonna budget those. This budget also includes pay increases for police staff that will bring them in line with other tier-one suburbs in the Wichita area. Recreation and culture, this is our park, city pool, the community center. Or we have library services, library operations. Library operations is the subsidy that we pay directly to the library for their operations. Library services covers our, our, our portion of maintaining the library building. So those are, those are expenses that we, we have as, for things that we do with that building. We also have community events here. So it's not a, not a huge expenditure for us, but these are some of the things that we do to, you know, maintain quality and life in the city. And community development, this is gonna be MICA's departments, essentially. Code enforcement, economic development, planning and zoning. And it also includes, this is also where we budget our, our subsidy of the Chamber of Commerce as well. So like the, the contract we have with them, like they just, you know, did their presentation for Neighbors United, this is where we budget that money to, the money that we give to them. And then transfers, we're not changing any transfers from what we did last year. We're still transferring four hundred and ninety-five thousand into the street fund. Typically, that is three-quarters of the total county shared sales tax that we received the previous year is what we transferred into the street fund for street operations. Equipment reserve fund, we transfer fifty thousand from each of our four main operating funds to equipment reserve, so we have a total of two hundred thousand going into there every year. We use that for equipment, vehicles, for public works, et cetera. We're gonna transfer six hundred thousand into the capital improvement fund, but like I said, we'll probably increase that as the next year when we see where, where we stand. That's where we budget that additional capital discretionary line item. And then we transfer fifty thousand into Special Parks and Recreation Fund every year, and that's where we'll be paying for things like the shade structures. The street fund, street fund is funded primarily through taxes in the form of fuel taxes from the state of Kansas and from Central County. And these are numbers that the state provides to us for what that will, that is anticipated to be. And then again, with that transfer from the general fund. The cost breakdown for our expenditures there, you can see here, we do about two hundred thousand dollars a year. In capital ally, that's gonna be our annual street maintenance program. And I believe in our capital budget for this year, we also had some additional funding for street maintenance coming out of the capital improvement fund because we had, we had transferred this extra two hundred thousand dollars in there last year to use for additional street maintenance for this year and next year. The library fund, this fund serves, this is actually where we, we collect the three mils that we, we levy for the library, and that, we receive that in the form of the various property taxes. And then we, this is just a pass-through fund, so whatever we have, whatever we receive is what we transfer to the library. So I build in a little bit here with this prior year fund balance number. So I, because ideally, we wanna have a zero fund balance in this fund because that money's just gonna sit there. But we can't, even if we receive more in taxes than what we budgeted, we can only, we can only send to them what, what we budgeted. So I always try to bump that number a little bit in case there is extra fund balance that we could transfer to, to the library. And it's usually just, you know, a couple thousand dollars at most. Special Parks and Recreation Fund, this is the fund where we use for capital purchases in, in the park system. So like I said, we budget a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We did that this year. We're expecting to spend most of that this year, ideally, and the same next year. And like I said, as of the end of the year, we had ten hundred and fifty-nine thousand in fund balance. And we'll expect to draw it down like that over the next two years, understanding that we're gonna be transferring in fifty thousand a year. And ideally, what we like to do here is we like to spend about half of that fifty thousand dollar transfer every year for smaller things, so that way, every couple of years, we can do bigger projects like the shade structures, or even bigger, depending on how much fund balance we have. Tourism Promotion Fund, this is the fund where we collect our transient guest tax. And we, in the past, we've used it for marketing expenses and other economic development equipment. I think we, I think at one point, we purchased our, our drone that we use for some of our marketing, things like that, out of this fund, so. But we're stack harder required to levy expenditures in this fund just so we have the opportunity to spend some of that money if we decide to. And then the Tanganyika Fund, this is a new fund that we created last year, and it's where we collect the CID sales tax that Tanganyika generates and pay it out to them. So, you know, we collected it for two years, and we finally paid out most of that to them a few weeks ago. We're continuing to pay out monthly as we receive that, we receive that tax, minus our one percent administration fee. Bond and Interest Fund, this is our debt service fund. It's where we collect special taxes, you know, in the form of something like specials you pay on your house. We also receive our general fund, or general obligation bond proceeds in this fund. So I always budget a very high number here for, essentially, it's gonna cover the cost of any temporary notes that we retire. So, because we need to have, for this fund, we need to have budget authority to pay off temp notes and receive geo bond proceeds. We also transfer, transfer, excuse me, in money from the water and sewer funds, which we, is how we pay our debt service for our water and sewer infrastructure that we refinanced last year. So that gets paid out of this fund as well. And here, this just shows the, how those expenditures are. This is principal interest issuance fees. And we also have this cash basis reserve here that if we do decide to, we have, we do decide to retire a temp note or something like that, this gives us the budget authority to pay out those temp notes. And like if we're going to, you know, refinance a bond or something like that, it would give us the ability to, to have the budget authority to, to make that transaction. Because, you know, we can't, even if we, even if we aren't gonna spend this money, we need to have the budget authority to do so in case we're retiring debt, for example. And we've run into issues in the past where we did not have the, we have not run, we have gotten closer in the past where we didn't have enough budget authority to make those note retirements, and so we've had to. I've made a point to increase that line item so we don't have that issue in the future. This is just our most updated statement of debt capacity. It shows our total taxable tangible property valuation, motor vehicle value for the total. And this is our debt limitation per that thirty percent equalized assessed tangible valuation amount. It shows our outstanding geo bonds, our outstanding temp notes, our total outstanding general obligation debt. And here's a breakdown of all that debt. And here at the very bottom, it shows our additional debt capacity that we have. So that's another six point four million in debt capacity we have available to us for, you know, future neighborhood projects, et cetera. So for the overall budget, this is our, this is a combination of all of our funds combined, revenues and expenditures. And this is the same thing, except it's the operating budget. So this, this is that same as this last slide, except it does not include things like transfers or, or our, you know, catch-all capital discretionary line items and things like that that we don't, money that we don't actually intend to spend. This is our budget summary, where you'll see here that one point nine, seven-nine, whatever it was, reduction in mill levy, that's gonna be on the general fund mill levy. We're still, we're still anticipating one point five million in ad valorem tax, which is more than we budgeted last year. We had, we did still have significant valuation growth. And again, we levy a mill for the debt service fund and three mils for the library. And so what we'll do is, with your approval, we will publish this in the, I believe it's the second Thursday in August edition of the Time Sentinel, which will allow us to have our, to be on the correct timeline to have a, our revenue rate, revenue neutral rate hearing and our regular budget hearing at a special meeting on August twenty-second. And we can adopt the budget at that time. Anyone have any questions about budget, about?
I don't know if inflation hurt your budgeting process.
We, so what we did is, like I said, we, we redone the pay scale for PD to sort of be in more comparable to other cities in the Wichita area for their police department, which includes a pretty significant pay increase that takes into account inflation. And then we did a specific eight percent pay increase for staff level for public works and administration of the city, so not salary people, but hourly people. We're gonna have a eight percent, essentially, you know, cost of living adjustment that'll go, go into effect when the budget is adopted. So probably the third or fourth week of August. So, but as far as our costs and the way inflation affects it, we've already included the, the costs for IT services that you guys included tonight. I've increased the budget for fuel quite significantly because, you know, those costs are at minimum gonna be doubled or tripled next year. We're already seeing that, but fortunately, we've got, we've got sufficient budget authority to, to cover those costs this year. So yeah, commodity costs have been taken into account. Costs of other services that we know are going to go up have been taken into account. I built in some buffer for things that I anticipated might, things like chemicals for the pool, chemicals for our water treatment and our wastewater treatment have been taken into account. I know that some of the other services that we use, we've seen those prices go up this year. So we, we anticipated that there will be increased costs. And it was, I don't really have an overall number for what everything was gonna be, but, because I was taking it, I was doing pretty good about taking it line by line about what each individual vendor, the increases that we've seen from them and what we anticipate going forward, so.
You think there's enough increase of new housing development to help offset that?
We have, so if, I don't, I don't have it broken down here, but if you look at my, if you look at the, some of the information I gave you in the packet, if you look specifically at building permits, they are considerably higher right now than they have been in the past. I mean, we used to, we used to budget like something like eighteen thousand dollars for building permits every year. That's over a hundred thousand dollars a year now. And, you know, that's been consistent for the last three years. So that's, we're, we're still definitely growing. We, you know, they're pulling permits all the time, so I don't anticipate that. I do anticipate that we will have enough growth from that to continue to fund our operations as we need in the short term and, you know, help grow the city. The discussion's gonna be, and as I, we've been talking about it for years now, is when the organization itself needs, when will it need to grow to accommodate the growth that we're experiencing citywide? So, and that's, I don't have an answer for that right now.
We're seeing, you know, we're seeing increased stress for workflow, not only on what we hear regularly with the police department, but specifically with public works and water. And the technical demands are such that, at least for an accountability standpoint, we've had to begin the bifurcation process of essentially saying, okay, we've got kind of one guy in charge of water and one guy in charge of wastewater. And then we have to kind of balance that workflow, and that's what, what Brooke has to do every week, and then adjust it as the crisis developed throughout the week to how are we going to spread our, our limited labor force around those demands for system maintenance and upkeep. And so the public works is, is a high-stress demand. And then, of course, what we know with law enforcement on response times and coverage areas and, and just service demands that go with, with a growing community.
I show you this chart every year. It shows what the city's portion of a, a tax bill would be on a two hundred thousand dollar home. So overall, overall, the city's, the bill on that home would be thirty-two hundred dollars, and the city's portion is seven hundred, about seven hundred and twenty dollars. The majority of the mill levy, you guys know, is the school district. And then next would be the county, or this, next would be the city, then the county, the state, and the, at eighteen point three one seven one, that's the county fire district. So I seek authorization to publish the notice to exceed the revenue neutral rate and notice for the budget public hearing that would take place on August twenty-second. And then we will do formal adoption at that time after allowing the public to speak if they choose it.
All right, the ready motion, does it affect?
Motion to approve the.
Publication of?
Publication.
Second.
I was just a little bit curious, though, right, the first slide you had on the whole thing.
Yeah.
It said, not that you go back, it said something about, it doesn't account for growth of what we have for the mills or whatever the budget was.
Okay, so.
Can you explain that a little?
So normally, what happens is we get our evaluation notices. That's one of the first things that we do, or, well, it's one of the first steps we have to, one of the first things we've got to look at when we get our, we're finalizing the budget. And so if your house was a hundred thousand dollars last year, value, that was what your valuation was, and this year it was a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Essentially, what we're gonna do this year is we are only going to levy taxes as if your house was still at a hundred thousand dollars. But your neighbor who just built a new house, and his went from vacant lot to now being worth a hundred thousand dollars, we are going to capture the growth from his, his house being added to the tax laws.
So why aren't we capturing growth?
I was instructed by the council to not capture all of the growth this year and only capture the new, new properties coming.
With the increase in assessments, that I think was an increase of more than twenty percent for existing properties, the consensus was to try and maintain a flat level for. for existing properties, the consensus was to try and maintain a flat level for the existing construction appraisals, I'm sorry, for the existing homes, and to only capture new construction, and essentially, any annexations or change in use, which, the change in use was very limited, it was like less than $7,000, so, it's, it's, it's just a way that the discussion unfolded was, you know, we discussed whether to use utilities or to soften the impact operationally, and this is the most uniform way to do that, for that increased assessment.
I think we talked about that, we decided to hold off one year because of inflation, people having hard times.
Crazy market.
I may have missed that, it could have been the one I missed.
We decided to just leave it level this year, and see what happens next year, give the citizens of God a little break on inflation.
Okay. I did a himfest job explaining, but.
Turned out more since he just built his house.
Any other questions? No, we've had a motion in a second, I'll favor I.
Aye.
Both, open to view.
I did not do this.
And we're blessed to be growing, so that we can, we can do that, without having a significant detrimental impact, and there may be a time, if, if we stagnate, that we'll have to come back and, and, you know, capture that at some point, but for this year, with the, that increased assessment, that was, that rationale. And you'll see some of the growth, you'll notice that the end caps are, looks like they've been applied, but you can still see that there's sheet rock underway right now. The fascia facade on this site still needs, needs to occur, but it's coming along, the hotel's on the right, the health club's in the center, this is also the health club, and this would be the childcare and preschool area. This higher roof line would be the hotel water park, and this concave roof would be the, the pool area, the nautatorium. And so, and then this image here, that little concave roof is what was funded publicly, with the water park, health club, childcare, preschool, and hotel being privately funded. You can see phase one of the ball fields on the left-hand side, with phase two currently under construction, with the subsurface applied to the final two ball fields, and it looks like three of the five ball fields are essentially complete. You can see Arbor Creek, construction beginning on spec homes for phase two. You can see the clubhouse area, pickleball courts and pool in Arbor Creek, Elk Ridge, construction of one of the few remaining vacant lots that have all been sold. Cloverleaf, you can see the third and final phase under construction here, and road along the backside, and then again, bringing that third phase back around into the second. See spec home development in Rustic Creek, with the roundabout being somewhere over here that then connects with 199th. And just a reminder, kind of what we have going ahead, for the budget calendar, we'll have the hearing on August 22nd, so the revenue neutral hearing will be published, and August 10th, when the clerk will mail the notices to the residents of our community, so we'll be on social media, you know, informing folks that they should be receiving that, and of the, essentially, the mill levy approach that was utilized to retain the, from a budgetary standpoint, to retain the appraisals at their former level, and to only capture, from a budgetary standpoint, the new construction growth.
Right.
Yes.
Do we have a third meeting for that?
We will, this is a special meeting, this will be the, this will be the, we, we meet the first and third, and this will be the fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't.
I was thinking of the digital.
We can't have the hearing until after August 10th.
Gotcha.
And there's, the way, just the way it works with our schedule and the 10 days from publication and all of that, that's the only day we can do it.
Okay.
And let's, with trying to avoid a.
A Tuesday meeting on the meeting following Labor Day.
Yeah, and that's perfectly fine, yeah, just wanted to make sure we had our date right.
Make a quick.
And then some forthcoming agenda items, we'll have our street pavement preservation, we'll have a planning commission appointment, zoning modification, quarterly reports, equity benefit fee discussion, and the wastewater mixer purchase authorization. That concludes the report, if you have any questions for myself or staff?
I was going to ask the chief if I passed one of our cars on the back of the flatbed going into town, hoping it's not going to be a big project.
When was this? There's quite a few down there, Dave.
I was just, thank you, Friday or something.
Radiator issues, radiator components.
Like a car, I was wrong. Hopefully, the Cybertrucks. Awesome.
Sarah, do you have any?
I do not, no.
Um, yeah, no comments.
Yeah, when I, when I got here today, it was like Larry was telling me about a Chevelle, and the young lady that gave her speech, she had a Chevelle on her shirt, you know, so I noticed that, it was kind of unique, wasn't it?
My nephew guys are real nice, they have old money, I'll just tell you this.
Yeah.
So are you telling us you're buying a Chevelle?
That's what I was going to say, this is your sign?
It was 69, wasn't it, Larry? Yeah, 69, yes. So, anyway, thank you everybody for coming out tonight.
Well, our next, next meeting, I believe, we're going to try to get an appointment for the planning commission, which will bring us up to seven finally, to where that could be a 3-3 tie all the time. Hopefully, that you'll like the individual that I've chosen, and Mike and I have talked to, and hopefully, we have a good addition to the, to the planning commission.
All right.
I guess that's all I have, so, if no executive session, I guess we'll take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Second, discussion, I favor I.
Aye.
Both.
Larry, what happened to your hand?
He tried to act.